Hello. Is there an invocation?
Adjourn work session.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to adjourn the work session?
I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourned of the work session signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Our invocation. I'll be Mr. Daniel Hall.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here together on this cold winter night. Please gain, um, give these elected officials the strength and confidence to make the decisions that are in the best interest of Brookhaven. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Uh, called this November 12th, 2013, regular meeting of the Brookhaven City Council to order. Daniel, if you call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rebecca Chase-Williams, District One.
Present.
Councilmember Jim Meyer, District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Bates-Madison, District Three.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gevia, District Four.
Here.
Mayor Davis, we have a quorum.
All right. Can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to just add, we, since yesterday was Veterans Day, that the city of Brookhaven thanks all veterans who are serving in the past and are currently serving in our U.S. Armed Forces. Okay, opening remarks. Um, we have a fairly busy agenda tonight. We've got a lot of announcements to make. Um, wanted to say that, um, the city of Brookhaven was approached by the University of Georgia Bulldog Football Team, and they're gonna be really putting their stadium here to the city of Brookhaven. So we, so we got big news there.
That's a scoop for you, Melissa.
Georgia Bulldogs, here in Brookhaven. Um, do we have any agenda announcements?
Um, I'd like to make a, a motion to amend the agenda to, uh, add a resolution.
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of the addition of amending the agenda, so state it, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Uh, we have a resolution here tonight. Um, we had a long meeting today, uh, at, uh, City Hall for a work session, executive session. We started 11:30 and we're still going. So we had about an hour break in between, but it really wasn't a break because we're all working in between. Thank you to Marie and Tom and all staff as well, uh, for helping us with that. Daniel, um, this is the first time as a council that we've been able to meet, uh, post the Shambly annexation referendum. And so I think it's very important that when we make decisions about any issue that we, uh, do so as a council with, uh, proper information, thorough information, information from staff, legal, whomever is appropriate to that decision. We need to vet every decision we make and make sure that it's in the best interest of the city of, of Brookhaven. So to that end, we discussed at length today, uh, the Shambly annexation and the lawsuit that Shambly filed against the city of Brookhaven back about this summer. And because, uh, we'd like also to congratulate the new citizens of the city of Shambly on our eastern border. I think it's a great thing that, uh, we've always supported the city of Brookhaven. I know all of us up here have supported the municipalization of that corridor, and we'd like to see the rest of that corridor, um, municipalized. We think it's, we think it's good for the region. We think it's good for the county, uh, we, and we want to encourage more municipalization because I think, we think this is the great form of government and we want to see it spread, uh, to the DeKalb County. So again, congratulate those citizens who voted to become a part of a city, uh, the city of Shambly. Um, I spoke to the mayor of Shambly today as well, but we have decided to discontinue any future funding of our portion of the appeal that, uh, was filed before the referendum. Uh, and the resolution speaks to that. So, um, as a council, we've made this very difficult decisions all throughout since December 17th, when we became a city. And this one was one that we took a lot of time with and we think we did the very, the most responsible thing, and that's what the result is, this resolution that I'm about to read. Uh, do I read this, uh, first and then they vote on it, or how does that work?
Just the title.
Just, just read the title as far, and then, uh, either, and somebody can make the motion as far, and read the resolution and make that motion.
Be resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Brookhaven that the city of Brookhaven is to discontinue its participation in any pending appeal to the Georgia Supreme Court. From the date hereof, no funds will be appropriated by the city of Brookhaven for the prosecution of the current appeal, and the city of Brookhaven seeks from the city of Shambly a dismissal of its civil action against the city of Brookhaven, now pending in the DeKalb County Superior Court. Okay? Is there a motion?
I believe we approve the, uh, resolution as read by the mayor.
Second it.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor of passing the resolution signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. That's done. Now we have, um, any more agenda announcements? All right. Public comment? So we have a, go ahead.
Ronnie Mayor.
Ronnie Mayor.
Get this thing to roll up a little bit. There we go. So we decided we're still gonna fight the pink pony, we'll give up on Century Center, a bunch of tax money, but hopefully, you know, some good will happen. We got a problem over in Ashford Park. I know y'all have already heard about it. We have a builder called Carrera Builders. I don't know who it is, don't know nothing about him, but he's, a lot of the lots, you remember a couple of weeks ago, we had the meeting and Jim Meyer brought up where the thresholds were, and y'all voted against his idea with that lot that we had the big problem with is the lot I was telling you about with the front doors way up here and everybody else's doors are down here. Well, now the same builder has three lots. You've got, uh, red tag, which is a stop work order on, I think, I thought it was on two of the lots, or you already stopped one, and now there's a red tag on his other one. He has come almost either 14 or 15 feet out past the build line, and I don't know if your old inspector is one who passed it. We need to check and see if the company y'all had hired before has a big insurance policy because this house needs to be stopped right now, red tagged, and it's either gonna go through court through y'all, or the neighborhood is gonna get an, an attorney to sue because you just pierced the veil in my, in my neighborhood. I own a piece of property with, which is for sale right now, and this street has estate lots, and somebody's just ruined my property value, and we've got about seven or eight other people here that live around there. Somebody's gonna have to own up to whose fault it was, but I want that property red-tagged immediately because every day I drive by there, and the first rule of thumb when you build a house is you rip the concrete driveway out, you dig it down, you put your little silt fence down, then you put your gravel on it, and everybody drives up and down it. So when it rains, the mud doesn't run down. Well, this house has been in the building process for eight or nine months now, and the concrete driveway is still there, the mud still runs down the road. They just got another, I guess you'd call him a sh, a thorman, and he swept the mud up one day for me, but all the red mud comes down that driveway and all the way out, and one, there's like five or six other people here, but I demand as acting president of the neighborhood association that y'all step up to the plate, red-tag this immediately and stop this because you just, it's piercing the, the, the value that there's, uh, I learned years ago from Gail Waldrop for DeKalb County. If you let somebody pierce the veil, you'll change every zoning of everything. If it's R-75, it's R-75. If it's R this, it's R that, but if you let somebody change it, you have pierced the corporate veil, and you're an attorney, you know about piercing the corporate veil. Well, these are estate lots. About six years ago, DeKalb County made a doctor tear off the front porch of his million-dollar house off Windy Lane because it was six foot out there too far. Six foot. This house is 13 feet out. I'm gonna give enough time for all these other guys to speak because there's gonna be a lawsuit here, and y'all need to snip it, and we need to find out if whoever permitted it, if he, they have insurance to cover it because somebody's gonna have to pay for tearing down this house and rebuilding it, and the impervious in the backyard. It's all garage, it's all been a whole lie, the whole house. This builder, all of his lots are all lies. So, you know, somebody needs to look into it, and somebody's gotta be responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Next.
Wade Morris.
I said I didn't want to speak, but I want to oppose the, uh, the building that Ronnie just broke up.
Next. We gotta make sure if we say anything that we come to the podium, identify ourselves, folks, just to maintain the quorum.
Gary Schneberg, uh, I live at 2707 Ashford Road, and I'm gonna pass my, uh, time over to Carl Myers, but I've been a resident of, uh...
Clarification, you each have three minutes. So this is public comment, and you each have three minutes.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
So, thank you, Gary.
But, uh, I, following up in, uh, Wade's and Ronnie Mayor's and several of my other residents of Ashford Park about this home, I believe it's 2802 Ashford Road that has violated several codes, and being a resident of 23, uh, years in Ashford Park, I've seen the changes, and I know that things are gonna get big and better, and, uh, but this house is an eyesore and violates code, and I strongly recommend that you address it.
My name's Carl Myers. I live at, or I own a house at 2696 Ashford Road, uh, just on the street from, uh, the house everyone is talking about. Um, back in October, I, I called Jim about it, and, um, he had suggested I would talk to the city manager. Ultimately, a few days later, they, uh, put a stop work order on 2727 North Thompson for what I think is the same issue. It's the, it's the setback. Um, there's a, there's a rule on the books that you need to stay in line with existing houses on either side of you. Both of these houses, one that was already framed up, one that was being formed for the foundation, uh, which I have pictures, but I don't think that matters, but, um, show that the, both of them are 12 to 13 to 15 feet in front. I've since taken some measurements, and, um, the house on Ashford Road is, uh, 13 feet and a six inches in front of the average of the two houses on either side. It really affects the, um, the, the streetscape, if you will, on Ashford Road. Uh, part of Ash, what makes Ashford Road a premium street in Ashford Park is the streetscape. The houses sit back roughly 47 to 50 feet back from, from the, uh, from the right-of-way, and this house is 16 feet in front of that. So when you drive down, you see a nice beautiful streetscape, and then this house way in the front. And, um, it's just horrible. I, I, I truly think it affects the whole street. Ultimately, uh, if you're gonna stick with this house staying there, which I hope not, um, you've now set a standard, and I don't know if you then say, well, this one house is the exception to the average setback. So the next person can't take that house and this house way forward and say, no, it's our new average. You know, it's gonna, it's gonna snowball. It would take 12 houses down the street to get the average back. That's what's gonna happen. So I really think it needs to be looked at strongly by you guys. I talked to John Olson, uh, on November 1st, and I was worried about this, but he admitted to me on the phone, but the city missed it, that he made the mistake. And that was very discouraging for me because I was hoping the builder had just gone and, you know, done the wrong thing because I think that's a no-brainer. You hammer the builder and then he has to make it happen. Now we're stuck with the city having to police itself, which I'm a little worried that that's gonna, I don't know what's happening. I talked to Ben Solomon, he says legal's looking into it. Legal's looking into it. No stop work order. So I think it's all of us to get together to make the city look at its own self because the city, according to John Olson, made this mistake.
Thank you, Carl. Next.
I have no more comment cards, Mayor.
My name's, uh, Dan Malloy. Uh, I'm also a resident of, uh, Ashford Road, actually own several properties on Ashford Road, and as several folks have indicated here, um, the house is quite a bit in the front, just, uh, I'm not a builder, but looking at it, I can clearly see, and more importantly, when, when I strongly recommend all of you drive by and take a look for yourself, uh, there's a retaining wall that clearly you can look at that house, the retaining wall and the fence next door, and there's a six-foot fence, and you can see this retaining wall that holds back a pool is almost as high as that six-foot fence, and it is two feet from the neighbor's lot. It's just, there's enough glaring things here that, um, I felt passionate enough to come here today and stand in front of everyone and, um, hope to raise the issue and, uh, have everyone see what's, what's occurring here. Uh, that's, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Bill Lowe. I live in, uh, unincorporated DeKalb. Uh, I'll be 2014 in the city of Shambly. Thank you for the resolution. Um, I think Shambly and Brookhaven are gonna work very well together in the future. I, I hope the legal issues are put aside and everything's cleaned up. Going back maybe a month, there was somebody here that was doing a presentation about a North Fork, Peachtree Creek, kind of nature trail-ish community park. I think Shambly and Brookhaven can work on this together. I think it will be a great asset. I think potentially there'll be another city on the other side of 85, Lakeside, Briar Cliff. That North Fork can go into that city, and it may terminate somewhere in the city of Atlanta. This is a multi-city, multi-county type thing, and I'd like to see it happen. Uh, that's it.
Thank you.
Oh, save the pink pony, by the way.
Save the ponies.
Anybody else?
No more cards, Mayor.
No more cards.
I have, I have, I have left.
No.
You know, I don't think we can cede time to one another. We gotta, you gotta fill out another card, Ronnie. We just gotta make sure, from this point forward, Ronnie, you wanna speak again, you have to fill out another card. We don't reserve time at the public hearings.
I got a picture of the wall here. We're very passionate about this, Mayor, so you have to understand, if you live next door, you'd be passionate to, I've got a picture of the wall here, and you can see how tall it is, and when, uh, the builder lied and said there was an old wall there, there was not, and this is a fresh new wall, it's too close, it's too tall, and he said that the garage was, was detached. It's not detached. So somebody who inspected this thing, somebody has a insurance policy somewhere, and y'all, it need be red-tagged tomorrow morning, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Do you want these pictures, or you need them?
Sure.
Good.
All right. Any more public comment? All right, the public comment section is closed. The consent agenda?
Uh, yes, Mr., uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Four items on the consent agenda. The first two are minutes of meetings for the October 22nd City Council Work Session and City Council Regular Scheduled Meeting, followed by a 2014 Land Use Process and Meeting Calendar, as well as the 2014 Zoning Board of Appeals Process and Meeting Calendar.
Okay. Is there an emotion?
I so move that, uh, we accept the consent agenda as read.
Who's your second?
Actually, I'm, I'm gonna amend.
Hold on. You got friendly amendment, or you wanna withdraw the motion and...
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay. It hadn't been seconded, so...
I'd like to make a motion to approve that consent agenda with the addition to, uh, this is the one where we have the, uh, the, the date change on the...
That's follow, that's in the resolution.
Oh, sorry, then my mistake.
Go ahead, Jim. Go, Joe, I mean.
My motion holds.
And I'll second it.
Well, just stated.
All right. I move that, uh, we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving this consent agenda, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved. Announcements?
Um, I, I have, uh, just a short announcement. Uh, one of the things that the city plans to do, uh, within the next really, uh, week or two is to plant, uh, bulbs and flowers, uh, pansies in particular for the winter, at all of our city parks, uh, at the entrances. We just wanna have a little splash of color for the winter and some bulbs coming up in the spring. Um, the Premier Landscape, who is maintaining our parks right now, will be preparing the beds, and then we're gonna call on all of our good, uh, friends of the parks and volunteers to come out and plant a couple of thousand bulbs and, uh, put some pretty pansies out there. Um, we, we just think this is a good way to show a little pride in our parks and, uh, throw a little love to them and, uh, and really have a nice splash of color over the winter and, uh, in the spring. So watch for a date, uh, if you like to play in the dirt like I do, uh, come on out and help us, uh, plant some flowers and, uh, and some bulbs, uh, to add some good color to ours, to our parks.
Bring your kids.
And bring your kids.
I'll bring mine.
And your green thumbs.
Yeah, all right. Uh, any more announcements? Okay. Reports and presentations?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm very pleased to, um, present to you, uh, item number one under this, um, section regarding the sidewalk installation update. As you will recall, in our, um, 2013 amended budget, um, we had, uh, information regarding, uh, how much money we would be receiving in the host funds, and as you all know, the host funds are for infrastructure improvements. And, um, we had set aside, uh, monies, $400,000, actually a little over $400,000, to look at each of the council members' districts, uh, as well as the mayor's, um, since he has voted at large, uh, to take a look at opportunities where sidewalks, um, missed a connection. So it's really like connecting the dots. This is not brand-new sidewalk construction, this is just filling in gaps so that there can be a continuation, uh, of a, of an established path. And so we're very excited to present to you, staff has reviewed this along with the council members representing their individual districts and, and with the mayor's input, eight sidewalk projects. Uh, I have provided each of you, uh, maps of those sidewalks along with the cost estimate. Please keep in mind that these have not yet been bid, uh, so this is a rough estimate, but, um, we're very excited about this, and I will leave it to, uh, each council member at this time, along with the mayor, to, um, make those announcements. Uh, I will say, uh, as you're getting ready to make the announcements, uh, this is a program that, uh, it is my desire and my recommendation that we will do this on an annual basis at the end of, uh, each calendar year as we ready ourselves for the new fiscal year, as a way to celebrate the holiday season and celebrate cityhood, uh, which our one-year anniversary will be, um, shortly upon us. Uh, so, uh, this money has been set aside, uh, under the host funds, and I will allow, um, the council to have the privilege to announce these.
Daniel, will you put the one that has both paving in sidewalks, please?
Did you wanna handle both of those together, or do you wanna...
Oh, okay. Just, just do sidewalks, okay? Because that wasn't sidewalks. All right. That's, that's sidewalks.
Correct. That's District One.
Yeah, okay. So I guess that's District One. Rebecca?
Well, why don't you start with the one?
Okay, well, if, if, let's just, let's just slow it down there. Just go to District One.
Go back to District One.
The brown one. Thank you, stay right there. Hands off keyboard.
Stop driving.
District One, uh, this is obviously where I live and where Rebecca lives, um, and as mayor, I have, you know, I represent 50,000 people in the city, so I've had an input where I would like to help citizens get walking in their neighborhoods, and then the, the council members have specific funds set aside for them to do within their district, and I, I kinda wanna help put some of my funds to each of the districts, uh, because I gotta think of the city as a whole. But each district is, uh, deserving of, I think, uh, of tax money that they pay in, so we wanna get some sidewalks paved and some streets paved, sidewalks built and streets paved. But in District One, the one that I, um, had been thinking about since before incorporation was the, the gap between Humility Lane and Stratfield Drive, uh, on Ashford-Doney Road, very busy road, right there at the bottom, where, where Ashford-Doney kinda comes it down into, at the bottom of the valley there, that's where the greatest speed is, uh, for cars, and we, we'd like to see our police address that area, too. But there's no sidewalk there, uh, the most dangerous section of, of, uh, Ashford-Doney Road. So it'll be connecting the Cambridge Park-Hampton Hall neighborhood to the Windsor Parkway neighborhoods, Brittany and Oglethorpe Estates, and, and it's, it'll be connecting the neighborhoods that surround Silver Lake. Uh, people, so people on strollers or bicycles or walking can now safely traverse that section of, uh, Ashford-Doney Road. The kids can walk home from OLA, if it's raining, they won't be able to use the trail so they can use the, um, the, uh, sidewalk there where they're non-existing at, at present.
St. Martin's.
And, or St. Martin's, because St. Martin's can, they can make it down linear and go that way as well. So it's, it's good, uh, for both the schools in that area and for the neighborhoods and for the, you know, thousands of people that live around there. So that was, uh, kind of one that was, has always been kind of important to me, and I'm glad that we're able to announce that. There'll be a little bridge there possibly as well to help people get across the creek because it does look a little wild area. Uh, and Rebecca, if you wanna pick up from there?
Let me tell you about the other two, uh, pieces that we're going to do in District One, um, up there on Harts Mill, uh, Road, which most of you know is quite a busy road, and, um, currently there's sidewalks on one side, and then, uh, for some reason, they continue on the other side of the road. But there's been no crosswalk or other safe way to really get across the road. So, um, I believe we're going to extend the sidewalk a little bit because really the problem is where the crossway walk would go, where the, where the sidewalk ends and the other begins, is really on a blind corner. So we're gonna extend that sidewalk a little bit more to have a safer way to traverse the road, and then put in a really properly marked, uh, crosswalk so people can, um, uh, safely cross and, uh, drivers can, uh, respect that there'll be pedestrians there. So, uh, I think that's a real important addition. And then the other place, uh, that actually is right between, uh, my district and, uh, District Three, we can, uh, we can sing a duet on this one, Bates. Uh, we, we've had probably more requests for the sidewalk along this stretch than just about any other place, but it's a, it's a critical extension of the sidewalks on Windsor Parkway. And so it will go from, um...
Osborne.
Osborne, really all the way to the Sandy, to the, uh...
Past Mabry.
Past Mabry.
Across Mabry.
There's really Phase One and Phase Two, but it will go Osborne to Mabry, and then we, uh, we plan to take it all the way to the Brookhaven City Limit sign, which is right there at Windsor Lake, uh, Drive. So, uh, for, for the, the people who have called us and said, um, you know, running in the roadway, or the people are fussing, fussing at me for running in their yards when I try to jog in the morning, uh, the road narrows there, so it's particularly dangerous, and, uh, uh, so our hope is to, our plan is to add the sidewalk there, and I'm very excited about that.
Yeah, folks, I'd just like to interject here for what the folks, for the other council members are about to say. This is really what, in my mind, one of the major reasons for cityhood. These are areas that have been blank for years and years, but no sidewalks, and really no input from the community about, can we spend some money on some sidewalks up here? There was just never, never any money to do this, and there was never any, you know, interest really in doing much of this. It wasn't possible, maybe. But now, you're actually seeing the results of your city and your tax dollars at work. We're taking money that you and I pay, and we're spending it in your neighborhoods, and these are based on areas that are, you know, gaps in the first part, where we're repairing sidewalks that continue to do that in front of schools, but it really does hit home for me about what this city's all about, and I'm really excited about this. And I'm proud of staff for putting the time into this and for coming up with the ideas we're making. Uh, go ahead, uh, number two. Can you move down to the, now you can read, put your hands back on the keyboard, Daniel. Uh, District Two.
District Two, we're gonna jump to the south side of, of District Two and install a sidewalk along Broadwood Way. Uh, DeKalb County, uh, constructed a beautiful new playground in Broadwood Park at the corner of Broadwood Way and Broadwood Road. Uh, there's a lot of moms and dads and, and kids in strollers coming up Broadwood Way. It's, it's a high-speed, blind curve, uh, so we're gonna install a sidewalk from, um, from the entrance to the park down to, uh, Drew Valley Road, and, uh, a five-foot sidewalk for the, for the length of it. There are also just a little bit of drainage work that needs to be done, there's some, there's a, uh, catch basin and some other things that need to be repaired right down to the intersection, so that'll be done as part of this work. So, um, any money's left over, we'll move back up, uh, and try to do some improvements around the school, but, uh, there's been a lot of... But, there's been a lot of new kids in the Briarwood, or excuse me, in the Drew Valley area, and this will give them clear and safe access from Drew Valley, and also from Brookhaven Fields, because you can come out of the back of, excuse me, Brookhaven Fields. Brookhaven Fields, you can come out of the back of Brookhaven Fields and come up Brookhaven Way to avoid Briarwood Road, which is busy. So this will serve both neighborhoods and provide access to the playground that has become a very popular spot in this part of District Two.
I'd like to note that the blue on the map, if you can't see the code there, is existing sidewalk. So I think, like Jim on your border there, is there existing sidewalk you're connecting to?
Yes, there's existing sidewalk.
It's orange there, but it would be blue if that border wasn't there.
Yeah.
Alright, Bates?
District Three. District Three, I think, benefits in that we have border projects with District One and District Two. We have benefited Windsor Parkway. I know the people at Windsor Lake who live just at the very, sort of the gateway to the city of Brookhaven on Windsor Parkway will be very excited. Also, that's a high-traffic area that Rebecca has chosen, so very appreciative to address that. Within District Three, we have a pocket park called Clacks Corner. And we'll be building a sidewalk to allow all the families that congregate, really Brookhaven Fields, that's the only pocket park inside of Brookhaven Fields. It allows all of the families and residents who want to take a stroll up to Dresden Drive to get up to the restaurants up there at Haven, Valencia, Verde, and all of the other great Dresden Drive restaurants that we have. So that will improve, and there is a lot of overgrowth on one side of the street where I believe the sidewalk will be going on the eastern side of that street? The western side, where the park is. But, that'll be a well-utilized sidewalk. And then we have a cut-through, which is a high-traffic area from Dresden Drive to Briarwood. That is, it's two roads. It starts at L.J. and Dresden Drive, and it continues down to a four-way stop, and then keeps going south to Briarwood Road. It's utilized by the DeKalb County Fire Department, actually uses it as a cut-through to get over to Beaufort Highway. A lot of people who are going south on Dresden, or south on Beaufort Highway, who are coming from Peachtree Road and cut through Dresden, use it. So it's a high-traffic road, and there's a particular portion of Cusawati Drive that really has a gap in between the four-way stop sign going up the hill, where you get a lot of walkers, joggers, parents with strollers, that have to go into a road that has a lot of high-speed traffic that goes across it. There are speed bumps, but unfortunately, it's a big hill, people zoom past it. So, that's a key safety area sidewalk that I'm sure will, we hope to continue to actually create a continuous sidewalk as that area is developed. There's some undeveloped property on that corner that we'll be addressing.
Alright. Thank you, Bates. Joe? That's not the sidewalk.
Here it is.
There you go.
That's the Woodward Elementary School and Cross Keys High School. The sidewalk is on the Woodward Elementary side. This was a byproduct of my participation in National Walk Home From School Day. And, most people don't know, but there are more children that walk home from Woodward Elementary School than get delivered on buses to just about every other school district. That's how luminous it is with kids walking home. This particular stretch is around a curve, as you can see, and there's no sidewalk, no sidewalk there, and it's a steep bank, so even if the kids want to traverse that corner, they have to walk on the road. It's a dangerous situation, so I selected this from a security standpoint, life-safety issue for the kids. It's the only spot, may not be as long as maybe some of the other sidewalk components in the other districts, but this is more than just sidewalks. This is going to include traffic calming, signage for crossings. It's going to update the flashing lights, they'll be put in, and we're going to update the crossings from the Cross Keys side to the Woodward side. So, it's a much, much-needed improvement that is long overdue, and I'm proud for the city getting behind this, because it's a real benefit to a lot of the people that live in our city.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Richard, for the hard work. One thing I want to make sure, Richard, that in any of these projects, we need to get on the bat right now about notifying the residents if we're going to be asking to utilize our right-of-way.
Right, and most of these, one of these, selecting these projects were to try to keep them inside the right-of-way. But, the only ones, the ones on Cusawati and on Appalachia are the ones that really go through people's front yards, and we will be meeting with those residents before we do any construction, just to go over with them with what we're proposing in any details.
If we notify these people, say, the city's proposing doing this, don't just say we're ramming this down anybody's We need to make sure that they're, we work with them and
We'll probably have a couple of public neighborhood meetings with those neighborhoods, where we'll have some aerial maps with some proposed sidewalks drawn, get their input before we finalize any plans and put it out to bid. Some of those, like the ones on Briarwood Way, Ashford Dunwoody, there are no residential properties that front those sections, so we'll be able to start right-of-way moving forward with the construction of those.
Okay. Alright, thank you. You want to do a little preamble to the paving thing?
Yes. As the council will recall, early in the year, you all approved the authorization for us to move forward and contract with a laser truck company that inventoried all of our roads in the city and the conditions of the same. Out of that came a very exhaustive list of the status of all of these roads and which roads needed to be paved and either reconstructed or, you know, cut out and redone. Richard has been working on that list, and we were looking for the same idea as it relates to the sidewalks. What could we do to, you know, have some improvement before the end of the year and take a look at some of the projects that could be the quickest and easiest to get to and, you know, have a very good impact to the community and to benefit the community? So, as a result, we also took funds out of the host dollars, and $200,000, in fact, and put that towards paving. And we came in with five projects, and they are amongst all of the council districts. And, right now, we're under budget, this is not yet bid, but these are recommendations coming from our Public Works Director again, with the idea of what could we get out there the quickest with, and that we could make a quick impact and improvement to the
And that we're already high on the list?
Yes, absolutely.
Can you explain what thick overlay and patching means and all that?
That's just the type of overlay, that's more, it's more for my benefit, but it affects some of the cost. A thick overlay is generally, those roads require two inches or more of overlay on them to rehab them, and also some patching where they'll go cut out some areas.
So we don't have the same problems again?
Right, a moderate overlay is more, it's going to be between an inch and a quarter, an inch and a half. It's not as thick. And that was just to give you an idea for the, you know, when you look at the footages, how much the relative cost would be.
Are we doing any drying at the curb end or the gutters to
The idea is to do edge milling on all of these roads, so to maintain the drainage and not build up against the curbs anymore. That's kind of a policy we're going to be doing on all resurfacing is edge milling.
That's good.
So it'll be as smooth as in the movie Cars when they
We hope. We hope.
Alright. We just got these tonight, this is great, you know, the good thing about the whole laser truck thing, the political element's taken out of it, and it's kind of, these are, in a way, they're demonstration projects because they're not long roads necessarily, but it's good that we can do that this year.
And the other thing I'd point out with this, and one of the reasons selecting these, is we only have about two or three weeks left in the paving season. And so, we couldn't take any, there may have been roads that probably have a little bit more need, but they're just too involved to try to do, within the two or three weeks we have in this paving season, they will be on the list for next year's paving, when we start in the spring.
Want to go to the paving ones, Daniel?
No.
That's paving. I'll talk about a little bit of this, Rebecca. This one here, again, it's, what Marie mentioned, it's kind of wanting to, when we're building a sidewalk, if we can pave a road right next to it to kind of connect it all at the same time, it saves a little bit of money, but it also kind of demonstrates the flow we want to see in the city. That Stratfield Drive location, it's pretty bad. There are about four or five potholes before the speed bumps and after the speed bumps. It's been neglected for quite some time, and it's, I'm glad it was on the list, because it definitely does need it. There's also an area I'd like to look at on Ashford Dunwoody Road, up the street from there on the right-hand side, before you get to ones of Parkway, where there are two pretty deep, not big, but deep holes that we made a look at for patching, but
We can, we can lose.
Because these paving and sidewalk projects don't mean we're suspending our pothole repair and sidewalk repair program. So, this is in addition to all that. So while this is going on, you'll still be having potholes filled and fixed and sidewalks repaired. Next one? That's Jim.
It's Pamela Drive in front of the elementary school.
What was the, what was the ranking on that?
It had a score of 58, which is at the borderline of really where the cost is going to start if we don't treat it within the next year. It was identified on the list for doing among the, one of the first roads, but it was, if we don't do it now, it's going to cost exponentially, start exponentially going up, so.
I know this one also has additional traffic, although the carpool line has changed now. It used to be the main drive with the carpool line, so it was getting much more than that. There's six houses on Pamela and the school on the other side, so there was a, I know it's been a little bit of a carpool. It's also, it's a short street with high exposure at the school, so it's a good location.
Alright, Beau?
Good question on that. Richard, will you be able to coincide that with the break in school? Because that is the bus route.
If I can get the contractor underway and I can do it during Thanksgiving week when the school's out, I will. I mean, that's the logistics I'm trying to deal with, with weather, and that's a difficult one because of the school.
Yeah. The same with Curtis.
Curtis and with the sidewalk. The paving, the good thing about paving is, for a stretch like Pamela Drive, it's something that a contractor should be able to go in and do in one day. So, one or two days, you know, there might be one day of prep work and then the actual paving. So it's not something that's going to, the Curtis Drive sidewalk, that's going to be several weeks or more to do that construction. Paving usually should only, a lot of these were done, because they can be done in a day or two.
Yeah, good. Alright, Bates? Can you even see the streets?
Yeah.
That's number, that's the blue one, Daniel, go up.
Go back. There you go. It's a little bit, little bit. I saw it a second ago, it may be on, it's on Jim's.
It's right there, but they're just not pointed out.
So, above Clacks Corner.
What is that one?
Well, there are two. So, above Clacks Corner, no, you had the right slide.
Go back one.
It's on Jim's.
There you go, leave it there, hands off. Alright.
Above Clacks Corner, that is L.J. to
Edouard Drive.
That's Edouard Drive from L.J. to Appalachia. Certainly another road that is in need of repair. And then you've got off of Mayberry, Hunters Brook Court, so that ends up in historic Brookhaven. Road's in horrible shape, so both of those roads will be a welcome, smooth addition to their drive home.
Alright, Joe, number four, the purple. Daniel, there you go, that's it.
Dunwoody Place. This is a quiet little area. This is a quiet little area. It's just been neglected for years and years and years. And, this is not a political decision to do this road. It's obviously, as Richard has explained, if we don't do it now, where it is in its degradation, we're going to spend a lot more money in the very near future, so it's a good decision to do it. Amen.
Thank you, Richard, for that.
Thank you.
Marie for getting that going, we really appreciate it. You're doing a great job, by the way.
Clock's ticking, Richard.
Yes.
And just like the sidewalks, mayor and council, we want to make this an annual event.
Right.
This does not take away from the aggressive paving program that we're going to be presenting to later this evening in the budget. This is in addition to. So we hope that this will be an annual affair, and I have it in the budget in anticipation of that.
Alright.
Okay, moving on with recognition of the city and identifying its borders, city limit signs presentation. Richard, if you could also point those out, the one with the black, like the black border.
We'll turn them around in just a second. We'll wait a second, I want to turn them in. We have two versions of the suit on the sign. One, and it's kind of, we need just a final decision on, one is all caps letters and one is capital as lowercase. They're both like the same style on that, and we just, that's the one we need a final decision on.
Do you want it in full now, or?
I mean, it's, you know, we're putting this to the mayor to make a decision on it.
Would you like Bates?
Which one do you think is most readable from a distance?
And these are, just point out, these are the actual size, the paper is the actual size that the signs will be when they're up on the sign.
And the color, too?
The color, too, yes.
I like that one was upper and lowercase.
Me, too.
I think it's, all caps has a
Probably easier to read.
Negative connotation.
They love it, yeah.
But I would like to, I mean, "Welcome To" is nice.
That's this version for those that
So that's the one that
For the city limits in
She was trying to get a picture of it. Pick it up, hire it. Trey, Trey's trying to get one. Just prop him out.
And, but the idea with the city limits, so the areas where we can actually put them at the city limit, where we legally have to say Brookhaven City Limit. There's going to be a lot of areas where we can't put them right at the state limit, just because of where the state limit lines are. So we also have this version, which is the "Welcome To" Brookhaven sign, which will be put on some of those roads. I know one of those areas is Ashford Dunwoody. There's some of the roads off of Claremont and Chamberlain Dunwoody that we can't put them right at the city limit. So, this is the idea for that sign. And, we are going to change, this one printed with black, but we are going to look at changing the border to blue border.
Like the city limit color?
Like the city limit color.
I think that looks wonderful.
It's just wonderful southern hospitality, "Welcome To."
One of the things that council and that we've talked about is that we don't want to have everyday run-of-the-mill signs, city limit signs, we wanted something a little I just think it's nice to have a city limit sign that doesn't come out of a, you know, like out of sweatshop that carbon copy everybody else, so.
I'd like to suggest on the "Welcome To" sign that we bolden or strengthen the "Welcome." The type needs to be a little bit bigger.
Bigger font size?
Not necessarily height-wise, it just needs to be, you need to have a bolder font for the "Welcome."
Thickening it up.
It's a little bit, I like
Whiskey?
Did our logo people do this? Did our logo people do this? Did a nice job.
Thank you, Megan, too, for your work on this as well.
Little bit, not much.
We like the, we like, I think, yeah, I think it would be a bit nicer.
Can we put a tweet out about it? Get some, get some, some citizen input in this.
Just let the folks know how great they look.
Right, with those changes, I mean, we're ready to
Because we need to get them up this year.
We need to go ahead and let the sign company get moving.
Yeah, it's, once we make, we can make these little tweaks, but then we're ready to bring them to our sign company to start fabrication, so we can start getting them up this year. The hope is, at least, you know, it's going to take a couple of weeks to get them made, and then we have to do utility locates on the locations. So hopefully by the first week in December, we're starting to put these things up.
Okay.
The other thing I'd like to say, and I've seen this done very successfully in other locations, is that six or eight of our major entrances is, just past the "Welcome" to Brookhaven sign is also do some banners on power poles, so you sort of increase that entry corridor, you know, and
Did you change them out yearly or something?
There's clips that you put on the poles.
But at least in the beginning, just if we extend, if we put four or five banners on poles, you'd be amazed how much more of an impact that'll make. on poles, you'd be amazed how much more of an impact that'll make than one welcome to Brookhaven sign on the side of the road. And just do it like, you know, our major Johnson Ferry Ashford Dunwoody features those banners.
We have proposed banners with our logo company that say explore Brookhaven, explore Brookhaven Dining, Brookhaven Shopping, and Brookhaven Parks that we put in different spots in the city once a funding's approved.
We could do, for each season, we could do one council member for each, like I could do summer with me at the beach with a pina colada and put on the banner. Springtime, we could have Rebecca's head around with pansies all around it.
Anyway, just a...
Banners are a good idea.
Great work.
Yeah, good job, everybody.
So we'll see those up in a few weeks maybe?
As soon as they get those ordered.
All right.
Thanks for having that.
Thank you. All right, where are we now?
Okay.
Back to public, back to public hearing. All right, if you want to speak in the public hearing, just please turn in a card. How are we, can I hear from Bonnie first?
Yes, I could just make a couple of comments, please.
Sure.
Actually, it would be really better if you would open the public hearing.
Use your mic.
All right, let's open that public hearing.
Yes.
Just pick it up a little bit. There you go. You gotta really touch it like this.
Well, Bonnie told me earlier today, which I thought was just hilarious and just perfect. We were talking about her making her presentation and she said, "No problem, I'll just hold the microphone up like a lounge singer."
All right. Well, let's open the public hearing.
So I don't know if we'll be able to hold the microphone the same way.
And bring on the lounge singer.
Anyway, thought that was cute.
Bonnie, you can sing your way through this tonight.
Yeah. Okay. Very excited to present for your first public hearing for the 2014 fiscal year budget. And I'd like to first and foremost thank all the staff for their time and their energy and most of all their patience with me as we've gone through this budget. I'd like to underscore, if I may, I'll try not to keep repeating myself on this, but I do think it's important and I make this point, that this is still in a very draft form. I expect that in two weeks when we have our second public hearing, you're going to see some additional changes. And of course, those will all be explained as we get to that point. I would also like to thank the mayor and council for spending, and I think the citizens should know this, hours, several hours in meeting with me and meeting amongst themselves and spending their own time studying this budget and for the questions that you all had as a result of those meetings and time that you spent with the budget. So thank you for your willingness and your obligation to making sure that we have a very sound budget and one that is not out of sight or overboard in our spending. We're again putting money into the reserve account, which I'm very pleased with. A million dollars will go to the reserve. We still have a little over $2 million left in contingency that we'll take a look at in the next two weeks. Revenues are up as we project them from the Carl Vinson Institute. Remember, this is our first full year of anticipated revenues and the revenue streams that were identified in the Carl Vinson Institute. The general fund is being shown as 18.8 million confiscated assets. That's part of the police department right now at $2,500. That's woefully low. You will see that number increase. Hotel motel tax is $1.3 million. The host funds, $5 million, $10,000. And the stormwater utility, $1.4 million. So the budget is broken down into departments. It's also broken out further into some of our enterprise funds, which is the host dollars, again, the hotel motel tax. So with that, and also the stormwater utility. So we are balancing the budget with the reserve. So Bonnie?
And that's good news, again. To have another million dollars to put in the reserves, and we'll have two.
Yes.
Beginning of next year.
Right, and then we'll revisit that if mid-year budget adjustment in June, next summer.
Right.
Okay, actually, I'm just going to repeat what Marie, well, I'm not going to repeat it, but here's the numbers again. The thing to remember is the general fund is the city's operating fund. The other funds are very restricted and are to be used for specific purposes. So we really focus on the general fund, but the others are also available.
All right.
And like she said, this is definitely a draft. There'll be things in this budget that won't appear in the final, in the final version. There'll be things in the final version that weren't contemplated when this draft was done, so.
Gotcha.
This chart in lovely fall colors is, it's just a graphic representation of all the, all the different funds that we have, that we have revenues coming from. As, like I said before, the general fund is definitely the largest and the least restricted.
All right.
Go ahead. And in the general fund, you can see that taxes make up the most of the revenues. And that's not just property taxes, that's other, that's franchise fees, the insurance premium tax, alcohol tax. So there's more in there than just property taxes. But you can see that's the bulk of the revenue in the general fund. And then the expenditures by department, that green to the left is the police budget. And you can see that's, that's the biggest expenditure in the general fund budget. And that's to be expected. Most cities put most of their money in public safety.
Looks like your department's right number two.
Well, and that's because...
Just kidding with you.
Well, there's, there's one time, you know, expenses in each one of these departments, especially since we're a startup.
And of course, you'll handle the leasing for it, right?
Yeah, I've got the debt service in that department.
They pay the rent for us, correct.
And also the build out of a city hall somewhere. The host, host fund is only to be used for capital items and some of the major purchases that we anticipate in the host fund. Two million plus for park improvements and some purchase of additional park land. Million dollars for sidewalks outside of this program.
That's great.
And another million plus for paving.
Could you repeat that again? Just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that's a pretty big deal in my mind.
That is a big deal.
What we just announced, and then next year, another million dollars for sidewalks and then 1.1 for paving. I'm excited as a citizen and I hope I don't look too, ever miss all this, but it's important.
No, that is a very big deal. Go ahead, Daniel. This here is, the host benefits some of the other departments too. So what I've done here is added the host capital items to the departments. And what you'll see is the parks budget is now 11% of the total, where it was, I think, five before, because a lot of the host money's going into parks. Police still is, is the bulk of expenditures. The reserve contingency, little thing at the top left, that's mainly because we're not done with the budget. There's still some money in contingency and reserves that's not been allocated yet and that will likely decrease as we fine tune the total budget.
Bonnie, can you, I can't see the number on the parks, what the dollar amount is when you add host to it.
29, 29. 9, 29, 950.
Yeah.
$2,929,000.
Right at, right at $3 million. And Public Works is?
There is no number. Oh, yes.
It is. The fall colors are kind of, 1,007?
What is it, Daniel?
Million seven thousand?
4,007,000.
Four million?
Yes.
Four, 4, 0, 7, four, almost 4.1.
That's got the sidewalks and the paving and Public Works.
Right, okay, all right.
So, so that shows that we're spending really close to 3 million on our parks and another 4 million on Public Works.
Right.
That's great news.
That is. So, okay, more, more. And this is just the two charts together showing you, when you put the host money in there, how it kind of, it changes the mixture of, because it is Public Works and Parks that the bulk of the host money is going to.
So that's something for citizens to pay attention to when they're looking at this. This will be online, obviously. And before we put it online, can we make sure those colors, when you have the, the numbers are white when they're on a dark color?
It's easier to read on the spring colors.
Early fall.
Spring colors.
Spring.
Actually, I can move the numbers so they'll print on the white.
Okay, that'd be good. But that's, so there's, it's good you pointed out that one's general fund. I think that's what confused some folks about the parks budget, is that you have operating and then you have investment.
Right.
That are restricted. So that's good to have that divided like that.
So, that's really...
Questions or comments? Is that a message? Don't ask a question, comment. They're going to come get you.
That's a major accomplishment.
It is. That is a huge, that is, that is. I forgot, yeah. That's the, that's the biggest thing, is the police department. Yeah. All right. Yes, any questions or comments? I'm sure we'll have some at the next meeting. Anybody?
You know, I just want to reiterate something Marie pointed out, which was that I believe the CBI study predicted that we would have 23.8 million. And that was at an even higher millage rate of 3.5. And so we lowered the rate to 2.85 and ended up with 26.6.
Yeah, that's, I'm going to reiterate what you just said. The CBI study pointed out that it'll be 23.8 at 3.35 mils. We're at 26.6 after having lowered the millage rate a full half point. That's a, that's a big deal, folks. It really is. Not trying to toot our own horn, but it's, you know, this is falling into our, some of this is falling into our laps because of the, you know, people at Brookhaven are improving their properties and making sure that their, that the city's tax, the real estate values are high. We want to continue that.
Well, I think also we went through two budgeting periods where we were just dealing with so many unknowns and we were just hoping and going on best estimates. And now the numbers are coming in and it's, it's quite exciting.
We also need to commend our city administrator.
Absolutely.
And city manager and administration and being able to do a great job and watching the numbers.
Absolutely. Marie, you've done a stellar job at leading the city staff and making sure that our budget is cut to the point where it's, we can have good functioning and it's responsible, but that we're being responsible financially as well.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that. You're, you're key to this whole operation.
Well, thank you. And I'd like to thank my staff. Really appreciate it.
We thank your staff too.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Not want to be on the negotiating, the opposite side of the table with vendor contracts.
Just run screaming if you see Marie out there. Any kind of negotiation. All right, public comments. Anybody that I know, we've had a couple of cars turned in.
Carl Myers.
And these will be, I gotta think, limited to the budget. The comments, right. These comments need to be limited to the budget portion.
Can it be about a work session that was today?
That could be later.
We have another section.
Oh, there's another section?
Yes, there is. And about, and about...
Sorry, this is my first.
No, it's okay. We want you to speak. It'll be a little bit later, not too much later. Anybody else have any comment on the budgets?
Ronnie, Mayor.
Ronnie, Mayor. The comments need to kind of relate to the...
I think it does. I'm appalled that Ashford Park is the largest small old neighborhood in Brookhaven. And we got snuffed on the sidewalks. And I'm sort of upset at my buddy Jim that didn't give me a sidewalk from Post Brookhaven. Everybody else got one or two, three things. So we got one. I didn't. They got the Drew Valley. And I want a sidewalk from Post Brookhaven the end of it to where we got DeKalb County to bring a sidewalk from the restaurants and shops all the way around to turn there to Green Meadows. And we need a sidewalk on Caldwell from Green Meadows around the Post Brookhaven. And because for all the moms with strollers and Caldwell Road there is a very dangerous road. And even more dangerous than the backside of Clacks Corner, which is not a, you know, a hot rod place where all the, all the hot rodders at Post Brookhaven live. It's just a sleepy neighborhood with a sidewalk now. But, but I guess either Jim didn't raise heck enough or Ashford Park doesn't really mean a lot. But in our budget, we'd hope you would squeeze in a little bit. And I loved it how you say that, Mayor, how you said that everybody's trying to make their property values appreciate and doing every the right thing. But like I say, I want, can't say nothing about, but do the right thing on that other thing we talked about too. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I just make a follow-up comment on that, just so that...
I was like, I'm going to stay with it. We all care about Ashford Park. Somebody said that. We don't care about Ashford Park. We do care about Ashford Park.
Yes, absolutely. And let me just make mention of this because I know you all are watching it. And Mr. I and I have had a number of conversations regarding this. For this project, $500,000 was allocated out of the host funds from 2013, our current budget year. Each of the council members were contacted and asked, "What sidewalks would you like to include?" And these numbers that you...
And why was that? Is it because they know their district the best?
Because they know their district. And we had input as staff, but we yielded to the council members because nobody knows their city and districts better than, than you all. In the review of the sidewalks, and Jim and I personally looked at the Briarwood Way, and his question then, and his question as a matter of about less than an hour ago was, "If we don't spend all of our allocation, we can still use it in our district." And the answer was yes. So these are pre-bid prices, which we expect to, to get a good bid price. But just to follow up on the comment that was made, for that particular project, we're looking at, let me just get it, $70,000, which we think is a high estimate. And there still is money left over. Each council member was allocated $80,000. Council members were encouraged, as demonstrated by District One and District Three, to share sidewalks where it benefited both districts. And the mayor has looked at projects where he could also add on to council members' projects as well. So this is not a finished program by any means. There is anticipated money left over already, $70,000 that has not yet been accounted for that's in this program. And once we have it bid and Richard is on his way, we will be reporting back to you all on how much money is left over and how each of you did and fared in your districts and what is still left. So...
So there, may I ask this, go ahead, Jim.
I was going to say to, to sort of further that, the criteria, as I understood it, is that we were looking at sidewalks that can be installed relatively quickly and easily.
Correct.
And sidewalks that had, where they were, were narrow right of ways, possible right-of-way acquisitions, narrow lots, lots of instruct, lots of obstructions, whether they be things as simple as mailboxes, but, you know, grading and other things. Those are long-term projects we're going to have to look at probably with some full engineering that are going to take six months or a year to install. And we just didn't have the time or effort.
Exactly.
So these were picked sort of on their, their ease of constructibility also.
Exactly. And that really was the basis of all of this, which sidewalks.
There's a lot of thought going into all why we did this. Not to slight anybody or not to include or hurt a neighborhood or not care about a neighborhood.
Correct. That's, that's why there's another million dollars in the 2014 budget for sidewalks. This is your annual...
And so each of their allocations, they're not going to, I don't know that there's one product where it's going to be all used. So they get to use remaining money. And then I, as mayor, have already committed to add to any other products. So if Jim's got 15 or 20,000 dollars left over and I've got another 10 or 15 that I want to put in, that's another $35,000, $40,000 product in his district.
Correct.
So.
Correct.
We could build a water slide in front of Ronnie's house or something. Joke.
That would come out of parks. And the, the spending for 2014, I don't know if sidewalks or concrete is time, is weather sensitive, but...
It's not as, I remember Richard saying it wasn't.
So really, we could maybe expect to start continuing the sidewalk installation in the new year, right? Oh, absolutely. Right around the corner. Absolutely. And remember, this is what can we get out of the box the quickest? That does not, is not encumbered by additional right-of-way or deep engineering that would have to be done, or huge retaining walls, or construction easements, anything of that sort. It's, you know, what, what rights of way are available? How wide are the shoulders that all we have to do is dig a footing and start pouring? That's, that's what this is all about.
And Jim's, Jim's stretch is a pretty long stretch too.
Yes.
It covers a long, larger...
Thousand feet.
Thousand feet, which is a pretty big this year. If we, you know, I know it might not be all done this year, but we got 1,000 feet and right there where I think there was none before. So I would hope that, you know, that your efforts and the efforts of the council doing this, not trying to, again, toot our own horn, but that folks can appreciate that we don't just throw things up on the wall.
Exactly. And in 2014, part of this sidewalk funding is going to include, I mean, Richard Meehan has done a great job of identifying, you know, the conditions of sidewalk, where the missing, you know, points are. And this, again, which was, which sidewalks would have been the easiest to put in, but where were the missing connections? That's what this was about. This was not new construction of sidewalks or the repair thereof. It was, where are two points where we're missing a sidewalk that we can drop one in? And so that's what this is all about and why all of them will be under construction before the end of the year. And we hope it's a wonderful holiday gift and a celebration of incorporation.
Right. People need to celebrate their own tax dollars. That's what it's been down here. Going to work. All right. Thank you. Anything else on the public hearing on this end? Anybody have any, have you got any more cars, Daniel?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Catherine Bernard.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, good evening.
Thank you.
My name's Catherine Bernard. I live at 1321 Oak Lawn in District Two, and I've been reviewing the budget that has been proposed, and I had a couple of concerns. The legal budget looks very high. It's almost $700,000, which is a good deal more than last year, which was almost half a million dollars. What do we need $700,000 in lawyers for? And does this include ongoing litigation costs? Because I know that litigation costs, I'm very happy that, that the appeal is going to be dropped, so that should save us some money, but if this is going to, if this is expected to include any fees associated with lawsuits against the city. And I'm also concerned about, we've got, you know, it's great that everybody's working so well together with the city manager, city clerk, and mayor and council, but we've got, you know, about $360,000 in increases on those budgets as well. So, especially if we're dealing with, you know, some of the costs from the first year were sold to us as, this is a startup, we're going to have initial costs, why are we seeing those costs increased by such a serious factor for the second year? So, those are the concerns that if, if there's any answers that we can get tonight, I would appreciate that. If not, I, I hope these are something that the mayor and council will take under consideration.
Can you say again that, that departments, you had the increase, the 360 increase?
Uh, it looks like mayor and council is a little over $150,000. City clerk is about a $60,000 increase. City manager is another $150,000 increase. And then legal is now at $690,000 from $425,000 last year.
Actually, there's some updated figures.
Marie, was that, are the figures you, we just heard, are those from the, an older version?
That's from an older version.
And that's, that's kind of what, in the work session, we addressed the, while we're changing our policy of throwing out a budget when it's not really ready. This was a rough draft, and a lot of us in contingency, so.
Correct.
Some things had to be put in departments that not necessarily would remain in, so.
Exactly.
Do you have any updates on those?
Yes, I do. On the legal budget, that is $415,000, which is less than last year, or the 2013 allocation, and that does include services for the city attorney, as well as litigation, real estate, and municipal finance.
Right.
Well, in addition to the municipal finance, but $415,000, as well as litigation. That's what we anticipate for 2014.
And we won't have a final on any of this until the next meeting, correct?
Well, you'll have another round of changes that will occur that you will see for the November 26th, and again, with more input from the public, comments from all of you. We will then have another change that will take us to the December 10th, and at that meeting where you make the final determination, you can accept it as presented, or you can make further refinements.
All right.
So, this is, this is evolving. Some of the comments that, regarding some of these other budgets, if I may, the mayor and council increase is, is due to a sharing with the city manager's office of an administrative assistant. The city clerk's is primarily due to the funding of two very necessary software packages. That's for records management and retention and.
Which is, we're obligated to have.
The law, state laws, we have to do that.
Correct. So, it is for software and.
And municode.
And municode, which is our municipal code updates, so that anybody in the country, as well as ourselves, can go to one source and have the latest and most updated versions of our, of our code.
You know, Marie, we, we get swamped with this, but we don't, I haven't seen it on, I haven't gone to the site, see if it's there, so this information that you're sharing with us, is, is the verbiage of this and the descriptions of this available for people to have to?
We're going to make that available. What was available were the general numbers in particular, and then, you know, some of these have now, of course, been refined. So, after tonight, you know, tomorrow we'll be working on this, and so we'll be able to put this on the web, including the pie charts that you saw this evening. I think that's important as well. And again, it will be marked as draft because that's what it is. It will be changing. There are some other figures in each department. That will be adjusted as we move forward.
I know, and last week, we've made four drafts already. I mean.
That you've only seen.
Yeah, that we, so, now, just for the, for the other people that are here that maybe not have heard earlier.
Joe, can you let her finish?
Well, it is part of that.
Okay.
The other people that are here, weren't here for the work session, is this not the situation where this year we were required by ordinance to report budget 60 days prior to?
Yes, and it.
And that 60-day period, it's just really a placeholder for a lot of figures.
Correct.
So, we're moving to change that to 30 days, so we, as council, can work on the first 30 days and make sure when it comes out.
Correct.
Does you have anything else you wanted to add, Marie? Finish up or anything?
No, I just, I think that covered the mayor and council.
City manager.
City manager, I mentioned that.
Which is the staff member?
Sharing a staff member, and also creating the position of deputy city manager.
Can I ask you a question that, that might help explain one of, one of the issues that you brought up? Can you explain a little bit about how we talked about developing a strategy that might separate one-time expenses so that we can have a more transparent year-to-year comparison of our budgets? I know that we talked about it somewhat in work sessions.
Yes, well, and I think that's a, a good segue for me to say, and, and you've heard me tell you all this a, a number of times, that startup is not 12 months. It's, it's basically 60 months. It's a five-year process until we get things in a more even-killed pattern. We have better predictability, we've established the culture, and, and we understand what it costs to provide and, and establish our levels of service for the citywide delivery. So, what we will be doing is, you know, we'll be marking those one-time-only expenses. I mean, we had a very large rollout of a police department that I would challenge any city, any city in this nation, to roll out in three and a half months. And I think we did an excellent job. The first day that they were in operation, they caught a couple of burglars, and so they were able to close out a couple of, you know, crime statistics that the county was working off on, that they handed out to us. So, and you heard the presentation from the finance director, that the bulk of the, of the budget is assigned to public safety, and then the second part of the budget goes to public works. So, those are all service-level deliveries of streets, your sidewalks, your infrastructure, your traffic signals, the repair of them, the, the building of them, and then the police department. And, you know, the police department, while we had this one-time major expense, you know, that's evolving, too, because as the cars get to 100,000 miles or whatever that cutoff point is, we don't want unsafe vehicles on the road, but I can tell you, we already have a plan for that. When they roll off, they're going to be used as inspector vehicles. So, we're going to get some life out of, you know, these purchases that, that we're making.
Take the sirens off of those things, they want to get inspector.
Well, yeah, but the back doors still will not be able to open.
Really?
But, um, so I appreciate the questions because they were good ones, and I appreciate the notice of, of them because there have been changes from the 2013 budget, but that is anticipation and needs of be able to perform and provide better services through the mayor and council offices, as well as the city manager offices.
And the third category was parks, too.
Parks, absolutely. Um, you know, we had a placeholder, and as Mr. Gebby was mentioning, you know, it, it was difficult, and it was a challenge, 60 days out from a determination, to be able to put in numbers. I mean, we're still negotiating and working with our vendors, so, you know, that number is evolving. We were looking at parks, and we had a placeholder for them. You know, there was an immediate question and comment that came from the public on that because they were concerned about, you know, were we just putting in a minimal amount and not really addressing the CBI study? Well, we did better than what the CBI study recommended and suggested because we had a greater amount of revenues that were coming in with a millage rate that was reduced from what the CBI study called for. So, I, I think it's a, it's a lean budget in that, you know, we're providing the necessary services, personnel, and equipment, and materials to provide services to the city.
Thank you, Marie.
The, the capital improvement for the parks that you mentioned, what will be the basis for those expenditures, determining those expenditures?
The basis of that, of those expenditures will be the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that we expect to launch the week of the city's first-year anniversary, and that will be a four-month process. We'll be finishing that in the spring. We will be identifying all of the city's parks, we'll be classifying them, whether they're a neighborhood, regional, community, or pocket park, and what the census of participation is for those parks. We'll be engaging the public and, and soliciting information from them on what kinds of programming and activities they want to see, what they'd like to see, and how they'd like to see their parks improved. We'll be looking at the CBI study as part of that base, and our own inventory of the grounds and facilities that are located in all of these parks as we're ready to purchase them. The last component of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, with all of that information, will develop a capital improvement plan, setting priorities that the mayor and council will place on that capital improvement program, so that we will have a work program on what facilities and what improvements will be made to each park. And that recommendation will be coming to you before the council, by the Recreation and Parks Director, along with the Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Marie. Appreciate it.
And if I could just inquire when we might have a public version of the new budget, since this is the one that was on the website as of this afternoon, when I printed it out, so.
Right. If you, if mayor, council, and the public could be patient, just give us at least, you know, 24 to 48 hours.
When will the approval date, date be on this budget?
December the 10th.
So, we have a, less than, a little bit less than a month to.
Correct.
So, we'll have one more public hearing to go over this again, and hopefully by then it will, you'll see it much more hammered out.
Let's, let's plan on budget publishing, and I did a budget by the end of the week. Let's not publish a half-baked one, and then another one, and another one. Let's get through sort of a round, and then get to one where we're comfortable and are fairly certain.
Well, she, but will she have met with all us by the end of the week?
No, I will not. I'll be meeting with you all next week, but, you know, we can, we can publish a budget by the end of this week that incorporates changes that.
Reset changes.
I've heard from you all today, and of course, I'm taking notes on what the public is saying because I want to share that with you and go back into the budget to see where we can make those adjustments. But, but remember, I also need to get back with the staff and visit with them and see where I can get, whether it's additional cuts or further explanation. And so, that will show a change, but I shared with you earlier that.
It's just going to be another draft this Friday that.
Correct.
People will say, well, what's the, and we don't.
Right, but the following week, by the end of the following week, we should see yet another evolution of changes as some of the contracts that I'm working on will, will come forward, but that will still be in transition as we, you know, reach and, and head our way towards December the 10th.
I guess personally, while I understand and appreciate the need for transparency, I also want to make sure that what we publish is, is reasonably close or reasonably accurate, and not just a stepping stone to, to get something out on the web.
Right.
So, you know, if you need some time, you know, feel free to give us a date that, you know, is a little bit out there, but I'd rather be a little bit more complete.
Just get back with us tomorrow.
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather be a little bit further out.
I would ask them for sometime in the middle of next week. Then I could save two changes.
Wants you to evaluate tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow, and then let it email us, say, we should have above, and we can post when we should have another version.
Right. I would like to, however, as soon as we can, within the next 24 hours, publish the pie charts. I think that's important to the public.
Yeah, the pie charts.
Okay, I'm just.
Pie charts.
We want to buy minutes for presentation.
Uh, there will be?
Yes.
Okay, with the numbers we can see?
Yeah.
Okay, with the, the white numbers on the.
You can see them at, you can see them at the director.
Okay, and you can see it better, okay. All right. So, the pie charts will be up soon, tonight, five minutes.
And also, you know, hard copies are available at City Hall, and, you know, I'm happy to sit down and meet with anybody to go over what changes are being made.
Mondays with the mayor?
Yeah, Mondays with the mayor is always good.
Come meet with me anytime and talk about anything.
But, you know.
I know council members are available to meet with people, too.
Right. We're going to, we're going to work, number one, the pie charts, definitely, but to get this next draft available, if we can, by the end of the week, definitely by the middle of next week, you know, we should have something else up on the, the website, and that's contingent on your availability to, to meet with me. So, as, as soon as we all can get together, and, and I'm hoping that's Monday and Tuesday and, and Wednesday, and, and then getting back with the finance director and, and moving forward. Mr. Gebby has said that he has seen four versions, but I can assure you, it, it took us 10 to get to your four, because this is a constantly moving.
When you're trying to be careful and be judicious with your money and make sure that Mead's getting met, get met, then you, that's, it takes a lot of work.
But again, I, I do appreciate the questions.
All right, we do, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, any more cards, Daniel?
Good questions.
Trill, Carson's.
Pull that microphone up, Trill.
Okay.
There you go.
I've just got three points. I'd like to request that a balance sheet and a profit and loss statement be released with the proposed budget. It's hard to follow a budget without these. I know that's not what they're called in municipality terminology, but whatever's equivalent that could accompany the budget to help break it down a little bit more with the authorities and things like that. Also, I have a serious concern regarding the increase in personnel and request that you really reevaluate those requests and needs and why. It's getting confusing with our RFP contracts, and why do we have employees now in that department when I thought that was the purpose of the RFP and the contract and their person? It's just, it looks like there's a lot of warm bodies getting a paycheck off of the creation of the city of Brookhaven besides just eight. And then my last thing is just to remind you that on the tourism side of the host allocation, just in case, don't forget that that is available for parks also. Not to be greedy, but in the, at both sides of the host allocation, parks will qualify under that. Thank you.
Thank you. They do not? Okay. All right. Any more comments, Daniel?
I have no more cards, Mayor.
Okay. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Old business? And we have one more public comment section coming up.
Correct.
Um, you know, old business, new business?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Under new business, we have five different resolutions, and we'll take them one at a time. Resolution 1175, resolution approving and adopting the holiday schedule and normal business hours for the city of operations and city employees for the calendar year of 2014. As I mentioned earlier in our work session, the word "day before Christmas" is wrong. If you could strike that, and it should be the word "after." That's the only change to that resolution.
So, the motion should say that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution ID number 1175, as amended by the city manager.
As stated by.
As stated by the city manager.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of resolution signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Passes.
Uh, next item is Resolution 1174, resolution to establish a regular city council meeting schedule for the city of Brookhaven, Georgia for calendar year 2014. We did talk about in the work session that we would revisit this calendar at the beginning of May to see if we would consider the summer schedule if necessary, depending on the caseload and items that would be coming before council. and items that would be coming before council.
Is there a motion on the fourth?
I move we approve resolution 1174, a resolution to establish a regular city council meeting schedule for the city of Brookhaven, calendar year 2014.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the resolution signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification, that is to return back in May next year to you all for consideration and advisement. Okay, next one.
I understand that, yes.
All right. Item number four is resolution 1177, a resolution.
76.
Excuse me, jumping ahead, thank you. 1176, a resolution to elect/purchase the DeKalb County parks within the boundaries of the city of Brookhaven.
I would like to make a motion that we accept resolution number ID 1176, a resolution to elect/purchase the DeKalb County parks within the boundaries of the city of Brookhaven.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the resolution signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Number four?
Number four, resolution 1177, a resolution authorizing the city manager to engage the services of a title attorney.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that we accept resolution ID number 1177, authorizing the city manager to engage the services of a title attorney.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the resolution signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the resolution passes. Number five?
All right, number five, resolution 1178, a resolution authorizing the sale and lease back of law enforcement vehicles.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve resolution ID 1178, resolution authorizing the sale and lease back of law enforcement vehicles.
Your second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of.
I'm sorry, just, can you give us a quick rundown of what this is?
Yes.
And how it's going to be handled?
This, this deals, of course, with our police vehicles whereby we, the city budget, purchased those vehicles, but we want to purchase and lease those back, and we'll be coming to the Brookhaven Finance Corporation in order to induce a loan so that we can repay the city for advancing those funds, which the police officers are driving right now.
Okay.
So this is a way to finance that over five years.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor of the resolution signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Has passed. Like, other business, any other business? Okay, public comments?
Carl Myers.
Carl Myers, 2696 Ashford Road. I wanted to talk a little further on 2802 Ashford. I'm not sure if today's work session was discussed about the retaining wall. I don't know if the retaining wall issue's come up. I know the setback has been a topic of conversation at the city for the last few weeks. The retaining wall is a major issue as well. It's, it violates, it's over the half-setback rule as well as the height limit. The builder, according to John, submitted as an existing retaining wall. We showed Google or map, wherever the pictures are, they showed no retaining wall there when the old house was there. The neighbor next door says there's never a retaining wall here. And the reason I think he does that is so that he can have a retained wall, because that's the exception. If it's existing, you're allowed to fix it, replace it, keep it the height it is, and I think he's manipulating the site plan. It's just my guess. Back to the setback issue. It was brought to my attention that today's work session was, the ultimate outcome, was possibly letting this slide from the city, which blows me away. I don't know, someone just said that's where we were. I hope that's not going to be the case. You know, I think as if a builder submits a site plan that shows being built on the right setback, builds 13 feet in front, he's going to have to answer to that, and he's going to have to tear the house down. I don't think there is any option to let it slide, because that opens a door for criticism. Unbelievable. So I hope, you know, I, this is the area where, when the topic of the city of Brookhaven came up, I loved it, you know, because I felt there was a lot of corruption at DeKalb on issues like this. I don't know if it was payoffs, mistakes, what the problems were, but I was like, a local government would not let this happen. And I feel like we've gone way worse. This, this issue rarely ever got past DeKalb County, and this has come up rather quickly on multiple lots. Luckily, I called Jim about it three weeks ago, because there was not a stop-work order on any of the North Thompson lots before that. This issue happened to come up, and it blows me away that here we are, we get a more central government, local government, to protect us with these issues, and this stuff is all over the place. And I hope that this is not going to be, let it slide. I hope that's not the ultimate outcome. Because that really blows me away.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Marie, correct me if I'm wrong, did we talk about possibly the ZBA?
Right.
Addressing this issue?
Yes, and that's really the only avenue that's available to us.
Right. We talked about the ZBA addressing.
Correct.
And there'll be hearings on that and.
Yes, we're trying to get hearings scheduled for December.
Now, we're, as far, are there any, the only other issue on this, on the setback issue is, happens to be in Ashford Park, and I think it's at another address, possibly, an issue similar to this?
Right, but I understand that that's been cured.
Okay, all right, so I just want to make sure they're not all over Brookhaven, because we just heard a comment that they were all over.
My understanding, two of them, one has been cured, and this is the 2802.
So this is the remaining one? All right, and it needs to be addressed.
And those were, neither of the two properties, I believe you're talking about 2727 North Thompson? And the day I called Jim, I called him, sent him text messages with the pictures of 2727 North Thompson and 2802 Ashford Road. Those, the two are presented. Within three days, Jim texted me back, said, "There's a stop-work order on North Thompson." I said, "What about Ashford Road?" It is actually worse. They're working on it. And they've been working on it, talking to Ben today, he said, "You know, there should be a stop-work order. There's tons of people there working." And he, and he wants a stop-work order? There's no construction entrance, done. There's a stop-work order right there. Forced to hand. And he did nothing. Asked Ben, "Have you been out to the site?" "No." "Why not? Haven't had time." I believe he had all day yesterday. It just blows me away. This is what we got from DeKalb County. This is worse. You know, lack of representation. These people were disconnected from us, and you were our right local, and I feel way more disconnected now.
Hopefully, we can remedy this.
The only connection I had was that I could call Jim, who lived in my neighborhood. That's what I couldn't do with DeKalb County, but, you know, I didn't have, I didn't have this great, this is over-the-top. It's, it's over-the-top issue, and I think it's more than just setback. The retaining wall's another issue. The setback's a huge one. It's going to set a precedence that's horrible.
Thank you for your comments.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Hey, guys, coming up again on this.
Did you see, did you fill out a card?
Uh, no, I can't. I did vote for the city. I do believe this is the right thing for us. I, I do want to have this oversight. I do believe in the sidewalks, allocating our money to do what we need in our city. I totally believe in that. The one thing that I really want to impress upon you guys is, we have got to keep at least the codes, everyone honest with these codes, and, and I really don't want to see a house torn down. I really don't want to see it junked up and cut up and all that other stuff, and, and I understand that this builder supposedly went through the effort of, of doing all of the right activities, and it is on us, to some degree, to step up to this and take a closer look at it. So I, I'm just here to impress upon you, please drive by 2802, take a look for yourselves. And that's all I wanted to come down and say tonight, is, it's pretty obvious.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've got a few issues, Rebecca. I would like to see y'all's passion, that y'all's passion towards still keeping this fight with the Pink Pony. That's our passion about our neighborhood and our property values. So if you think how you feel very strongly about the Pink Pony, take that feeling out of you and feel what we feel like on Ashford Road. It's not right, and, and y'all need to really do some soul searching here. I believe the house needs to be torn down, or you're going to have some kind of money coming out of that reserve, because somebody's going to sue you. I mean, they are, it's going to happen. And now the next thing, I'm going to reverse myself, and y'all going to put the flowerbeds and everything, it's, it's a great thing. I don't know if y'all know, after you put flowerbeds down, somebody's got to take care of them and water them. So I'm best friends with the number-one horticulturist almost in the state. He supplies all the flowers for all the nurseryman. He's only a block out of the city of Brookhaven, but if y'all want, and I even have a dump truck that I own, and I'll even donate my dump truck to haul some of the soil mixtures. I can get a wholesale price of soil mixture and wholesale price of these flowers without whoever y'all hire. He buys them and he marks it up. I can get them for the city at a wholesale cost that will save us. And even though I'm big Ronnie Mayor, old burly, my passion is flowering plants, and you come see my yard, and I create all my flowerbeds, and Jim will tell you, I'm pretty good with my flowerbeds, and I know my flowers and my plants and everything, so whatever I can do to help y'all with everything. And one more time again, we have a great city manager and her team is doing a great job. I know y'all doing a great job, too, but I really want y'all to reach down real deep on this Ashford Road deal, because he was right, everybody's right. This is a local thing, and it really needs to be stopped, because if you look, same builder, three lots trying to do the same thing, and it's all, see, all the good lots are already taken. It's the bad lots that they try to turn into good lots, whether it's jacking the house up, pushing and pulling, and trying to get away. Even the garage was only, the permit says it's detached. It's attached, so the whole plan is just, as we call it, a ball-faced lie. So we appreciate if y'all get that thing fixed. And in Ashford Park, our park over there, we have a little piece of sidewalk that was a builder a couple of years ago that messed up on one of his lots, and he agreed to pay, to pave like 20 foot of sidewalk, so from Redding Road into Ashford Park, there's one piece of sidewalk that comes in and ends, and we need about another 20 foot of sidewalk to bring it into the park area completely, where the rest of the sidewalks are. Thank you.
Ms. Carson's?
I appreciate the street paving and the sidewalk project that y'all are doing. Since the edge milling was brought up, I just want to request that please preserve any of the granite edging that's in place in some of the areas. I know around Claxton Quarter, we've got the granite edging, so if you could just be careful in those areas and leave it there.
Where is Richard? Is he gone?
Yes, he had another meeting to go to. He and I've talked about that.
Okay, that's important to me, too, yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Daniel?
I have no more comments, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any more comments from the public? All right, public comment section is closed. Mayor's comments? This, I was kind of aware, I'd been out to see the other property in, of Skyland, I think Bates and I had been out there on the, one that has been cured, the setback, and the first I've heard of this other one was, I think, tonight, may have been mentioned previously, but the depth to which this has progressed, I wasn't necessarily completely aware of, and we need to, I don't know if we need to, since we're all here, maybe a quick executive session on this, this issue, or maybe.
I believe we do.
Okay, I think so. So this is a little more in-depth than I realized, and I think maybe some of us didn't realize how in-depth it was. So we hear you on that, and now that we know about all these issues with retaining walls and the, and the detached garage, and the degree, we knew that, we heard earlier tonight of the amount of the setback, I don't know what our remedy will be, I don't, you know, tearing down a house, sounds like an extreme remedy, I don't, I can't say that we can put that out of our mind, it's a possibility. We'd of course like to avoid that, but we'll have to see what's, what's happening with this, we get some advice from our attorney, and talk to some other folks about it. And we welcome you, Mondays with the mayor. Anybody have any comments about anything or concerns about anything with the city? Every Monday, if it's not a holiday, I'm usually there from 2:30 to 5:00 to meet with anybody about anything, and I know council can be reached as well. Moving on from that to AEDs. The Friends of Brookhaven are raising money to buy the arterial, what do they call something? Devices? Automatic, automatic external defibrillator, you know it now. The, to put in all the police cars, the shock boxes. It's a very important project the Friends of Brookhaven are involved with. Ronnie, I hope you can give some money to that, if you haven't already, to the defibrillators of the police cars, and you can have a little barbecue or something to raise money for that. But thank you, Clayton, stand up, if you've got some of these cards here.
I've got a few, yes.
Clayton, Canaro's got, on the board, Ronnie's got one, but take one of those and pass them out if you would, and we'd like to make a gift to the city, this group would, around Christmas time with these defibrillators. I'd like to also mention Susan Hyatt, our city clerk. Daniel's been filling in very well. He's been swamped for the past few months, as our clerk, Susan Hyatt, had been very, very, very ill, and she's back on her feet now, and she's coming back to the city.